So, good evening everyone and welcome to our candidates forum for the two open seats on the Board of Selectmen. My name is Katie Goodfellow and I serve as Town Moderator. And with me is Joanne Uppam, who you may have seen interviewing candidates in the past and in past forums. We have three people running for two open seats, both with three-year terms. Last week, Joanne and I met to review the questions submitted by our voters for tonight's forum. Submissions were received via Facebook or through the Lakeville Library. There was a basket with the sign and we posted that those were the two places that you could submit some questions. We organized the questions by category or topic and eliminated any duplicates. Tonight, we have 11 questions, which is more than we usually have, but the questions were timely and relevant to the elections, so we included all of them. If time permits, we may be able to open up the floor for questions from the audience if such questions are general enough that they would apply to all three candidates. In other words, no personal question directed at anyone. None of our candidates have seen any of the questions in advance. I'd like to clarify that we are participants in a forum. Candidates will not be debating each other back and forth, although they certainly could answer or reply to something during their time speaking if something's already been said. Now, for tonight's format, each of our three candidates will have three minutes to state who they are, why they're running, and any history of service to the town. Then Ms. Uppam will ask the first question. Each candidate will have two minutes to answer the question. We ask that candidates keep their answers to two minutes. When you have 15 seconds left, I will give you a warning to wrap up. Of course, you do not need to take your full two minutes if you can more succinctly answer the question. We'll proceed to ask the other questions in the order determined with the candidates before the meeting. Those were those numbers that you drew. Candidates, please do not engage in any personal attacks on other candidates. We care what you think and what your position is. And audience members, we ask the same. Please do not shout out any personal remarks. We have always conducted ourselves well and let's keep that tradition. After Ms. Uppam has asked all the questions, candidates will be given three minutes to wrap up any way they wish in seating order. And they can also use this time to add a comment or respond to something already mentioned or to clarify a point. After all the questions have been -- oh, I already said that. So, I will now introduce each of the candidates in seated order and then return to the beginning of the table for the first opening comment. When each has had the opportunity to make his or her opening statement, Ms. Uppam will begin to question the candidates. So, we have Mr. Paul Hunt, Mr. Christopher Plonka, and Ms. Leah Fabian. Welcome, candidates. Thank you.
Okay. So, first question directed to Paul. The position on the Select Board involves working collaboratively with other members of the Board, with other Boards and with groups in town, along with private citizens. How do you envision working on the Board and with other constituencies, including with the public at open meetings?
I think that I've got a pretty good history of working with groups and with interested parties in different levels of government. I did, in the past, serve on the MBTA Study Committee back in the day before the MBTA came in. I am still a member currently of the Agricultural Commission here in town. In my previous life, I worked with a number of different entities as a police officer. I've been retired now almost 10 years. When I went up to Boston, I was a representative for the particular university that I worked with up there at the Mission Hill Groups and things like that, speaking to groups up there, trying to quell the problems with the neighborhoods and the students that we had and hear the complaints and so forth there. I have served also on a regional team when I was on the Police Department, working, supporting a number of communities in southeastern Massachusetts on the search and rescue team. So, I'm pretty good at collaborating with other people and trying to make sure everybody is heard.
Okay. Thank you. Chris, let me repeat the question.
Yes, please.
You okay?
Yes.
Okay. The position on the Select Board involves working collaboratively with other members of the Board, with other Boards, with groups in town, and with private residents. How do you envision working on the Board and with other constituents, including with the public at open meetings?
Okay. So, my experience with working with the town, I've been in the Finance Committee for the past three years, two years as Chair. So, in that capacity, I've worked with members of the Select Board, Town Administrator, other town employees, as well as collaborating with Free Town Finance Committee regarding the regional school district budget. So, I've learned to work with those other members. I listen to their inputs. I value their opinions. And again, I take all that and I assess that and I use that really ultimately to solve the problems at hand. So, I believe firmly that at the end of the day, it's all about solving the problems at hand, dedicating myself to the town, and listening to those opinions, especially the public at law as well. I've attended most of the town meetings in the past. It's a great opportunity to get the inputs from the community, listen to them, engage them, and then use that, again, help solve the problems at hand.
Okay. Leah, yours is a little different, your question. The position on the Select Board involves working collaboratively with other members of the Board, with other Boards, with groups in towns, and with private citizens. How would you describe your working relationships during your past service as a Select Board member and moving forward?
So, I've always tried to especially talk to anyone who wants to call me, talk to me, meet me anywhere, standing in the supermarket over our, you know, grocery carts. I really do care what people think. I wear my heart on my sleeve. So, I definitely, I always work with our department heads, our other committee members, Town Administrators, all these folks who, you know, come to the table. I think it's important to have collaboration. This town would not have made it through the COVID epidemic as well as we did if we all hadn't been listening to each other. Our strength is in how a lot of the folks work together. With the residents, again, my, I've always tried to listen to what people say. There's a past where I wasn't a favorite of a lot of folks because of the Lakeville Country Club. I will have to say that there were lots of mistakes made. I wish we could go back and change things. There were mistakes made everywhere, but that doesn't mean that I didn't hear the concerns of the folks. I absolutely did, but I just couldn't leverage the financial status of the town, which was an extremely difficult decision for me and my family because, you know, we all took the brunt of that decision. But it's all about collaboration. It's all about working with every person on every Board, every committee. Right now, I'm working a lot with the schools on teacher union negotiation stuff. You just have to be willing to work with other folks.
Okay. Chris, you're going to start the next question, okay?
I have to break this off you.
Yeah. Go for it. Three minutes, yeah?
Just state who they are, why they're running, and their history of service.
Oh, I thought that's what this was.
No, that's a good question.
Okay, we're going back. Before I start, Chris, we'll go back to Paul. Paul, would you let us know why you're running and any history that you have served in the town and --
That's it.
Right?
That's it.
Okay. There you go. Any history that you've done anything in the town, like you --
So, I have been on a couple different committees. I was on the MBTA Study Committee, as I said previously, and I'm a current member of the Agricultural Commission. In fact, one of the people that started the AgCom here in town. As far as service to the town, I have worked for the town in one capacity or another since 1982, when I started on the Park Department emptying trash cans. And then I was a lifeguard for the park until 1985, when I graduated from high school. After that, I went into the cranberry industry and worked there, decided I didn't want to be cold and wet all the time. And at the urging of one of my childhood friends, I applied for a job at the Lakeville Police Department as a part-time dispatcher. And I was hired as a part-time dispatcher in 1986, which turned into an offer of a full-time police position. And as I said, I served 28 years on the Department, retiring 10 years ago. Born and raised in town, five kids in a blended family here in town. I'm involved in the community in a number of different aspects, not only living here, but volunteering and working here as well.
Okay. Thank you. Chris?
Yeah, so I am a 20-year resident, retired United States Air Force Weather Officer. I'm currently a Cyber Security Risk Manager. My daughter did go through the Lakeville School District, except for a few years in Prokial School and a few years of homeschooling, and then she also went on to Old Colony. And I'm also a member of the Lakeville Lions Club, have been about nine years now, and have been in the Finance Committee for the past three years, two years serving as Chair. So, the reason why I decided to run for a position of Select Board is, I think anybody who knows me has known me for a while, I'm passionate about this community, I'm dedicated to this community, and you can see what I've done through the Lakeville Lions Club. I'm also a member of the Old Colony School Building Committee, as well as the Old Colony Foundation. And I wanted to apply my financial experience as being on the Finance Committee for three years, apply that at the Select Board. And again, my goal is to help keep this community affordable. I know it's difficult. We have some difficult financial challenges coming, and I'm dedicated to helping us resolve those financial challenges and again, keep our community affordable.
Okay. Leah? Same question.
Same question.
Okay. The rest will be same.
Okay. So, my husband and I opened our business here in Lakeville in 1990, and we moved to town in 1992. We knew within that first year that we had our business here, that Lakeville was where we wanted to live and where we wanted to raise our kids. And I still say that with conviction, that it was the best move we ever make, we ever made. Someone recently asked me what one of my favorite things about Lakeville was, and I said, "Just having," we're fortunate to have a couple acres, and I just love going out in the woods, and I feel like that's like my happy place. And I'm not sure there's a whole lot of places I could get that anymore. So, I did all kinds of volunteering, all through the kids' school, baseball, PTO, all that, that kind of stuff. But when we were retiring from our business, I've always been interested in local politics, and I put my name in the race for Assessor. And I chose Assessor for a very specific reason, and it's because you learn all about the revenue side of town government. And I knew that would serve me well if I ever decided to want to become a Selectman, which since I became a Selectman, we've actually changed to Select Board. So, pardon me if I don't always get it right. It's Select Board now, which I'm proud of because that was one thing that I brought forward, so, but it still gets me every now and then. So, yeah, so I was four years on the Board of Assessors, learned so much, and felt very ready to step up to the Select Board, understanding, you know, the revenue, taxation, all that, all that there is to know there. But I've enjoyed my time. I've enjoyed helping so many people. The decisions are not always easy. I've lost tons of sleep. I've had many sleepless nights, but then sometimes you just feel this sense of satisfaction, of feeling as though like you've done such a great thing for the community, for the place that you live, that I just couldn't see myself not putting my name in for another term.
Okay. All right. All set?
Please.
Okay.
Go to your questions.
The real questions now. And we'll start with Chris. With major projects like the Rocky Woods Housing Development, the Old Lakeville Hospital Site redevelopment, and the MBTA mandated zoning changes, how do we balance the town's need for growth while protecting its resources?
So, we all know that the town's facing some challenges in terms of development, growth, balancing the affordable housing, commercial development, with trying to keep a sustainable budget, keeping our taxes affordable. So, my opinion is that commercial development that fits with the character of the town is what is needed. Commercial development in the areas of town that can sustain it with minimal impacts, areas of town that has that required infrastructure such as water, at the same time minimizing development and impacts to the land. So, Rocky Woods, I don't, I'm not in support of the current proposal due to the impacts to the environment, the potential traffic in that area of that town. I live behind high school, so I'm familiar with the traffic in that area. At the same time, I recognize the need for having affordable housing. I would prefer that the town be given more authority over our high-density housing options, but I am aware that the state mandates the high-density housing requirements because we do not meet the required number of affordable housing units. We're still about 5%, only about halfway there to get affordable housing number. So, that being said, again, it's a balance. It's that commercial development, affordable housing, maintaining rural character per master plan limitation, and keeping affordable taxes, a tax rate that's affordable. Thank you.
Okay. Leah?
Can you repeat the question?
Sure. With major projects like the Rocky Woods Housing Development, the Old Lakeville Hospital Site redevelopment, and the MBTA mandated zoning changes, how do we balance the town's need for growth while protecting its resources?
Everything Chris said is so like on point, and I would expect nothing less, but it's a daunting task because taxation, the residents are just, residential taxation just at some point where isn't going to be enough to sustain the town. We've already seen so much growth. We need to do, and the residents have spoken loudly and clearly on the types of growth they want, and it's going to come down to, you know, sitting down with folks, getting folks again with collaboration with the residents, even if everyone's not on an economic development committee. It's going to have to be about multiple meetings to see, you know, what folks will and, you know, what they do and don't want to see. But it's not going to be an easy task at all because everything is just getting so much more expensive and I'm not, it's not that I'm not up for the challenge because I certainly am, because I knew it was coming, but you just have to look at these things realistically. The town has grown. We were this great secret for the longest time, and then about 10, 15 years ago, folks really found out, and now everyone just wants to build houses here, and that's going to continue to make it more and more expensive and more difficult.
Okay. Paul?
It's going to sound like a cop-out, but there's no easy answer to any of this. You know, as far as Rocky Woods, beautiful piece of property. I've spent time out there recreationally in years past. Ideally, that would be a well-suited location if it was something that could be done for business, where you would have an exit off of Route 140, but I think that ship has sailed, and you're going to be looking at housing there, hopefully in incremental stages and not all built up at once. Lakeville Hospital, I remember that as a vibrant piece of property with neighbors and friends that worked there. You know, I played football on the front lawn there as a kid. It's sad to see it in the state it's in. It certainly needs a cleanup. It certainly needs a lot of work there. My concern in that area of town is that historically 105 and Bridge Street can't support a high flow of traffic. That's a dangerous intersection as it is, as is 105 and Clear Pond Road and Barn Street. So, anything that gets built up in that area of town is going to need significant infrastructure changes and road changes. I don't think the town of Middleborough is going to easily volunteer the supporting water and sewer that you're going to need there, but that's something that's going to have to be negotiated with them if you try and do that. I'm a big fan of one of the 40s that most people don't talk about, 40Y. You know, I have children here that have grown up in town that can't afford to live in this community anymore. Fortunately, my father set my mother up very well, and she was able to live in her home until she passed. But there's a lot of seniors that are struggling and need, and are at the point where they want to still remain in a community, but maybe not in the home that they're in, and something smaller and more affordable would work out.
Okay. And the next question starts with Paul. How would you ensure transparency and communication with residents on key decisions, especially regarding large capital projects?
Transparency as far as following the open meeting laws and not having meetings behind closed doors or via text message or via emails and so forth. I know that there's some concerns about those things, that decisions are made and people meet in secret and plan things out before things actually come to the table. I think you have to be honest. I try and be honest to a fault. One of my good friends uses the phrase, "I don't know what I don't know." You know, so you will, I will try and seek the information from all different angles and talk to different people and just try and be open and honest about what's going on. I know that in a position of being on the Select Board, you have to put your personal opinions aside a little bit, your personal feelings towards people, and work towards the greater good in spite of maybe how you feel about things. And I think that we have to strive to do that, to try and work with people openly and honestly to make sure that the public knows what's going on on a regular basis.
Okay. Thank you. Chris?
Repeat the question.
Yep. How would you ensure transparency and communication with residents on key decisions, especially regarding large capital projects?
So, collaboration is key. I'm a strong believer in that. So, anytime we're dealing with any of these issues, especially large capital projects such as fire station, police station, and so forth, as long as we're having those required public forums in accordance with the open meeting laws and so forth, ensuring that information is clearly communicated to the residents via the social media, Facebook, and so forth, accurate information being posted on the town website, and as long as that information, I mean, I will work to ensure that that information is presented in a clear manner that our residents can understand, backed up with accurate facts. I know some of these issues can get bogged down with personal feelings and agendas and so forth. I will work to ensure that that is filtered out, and we stick to the facts, and we listen to our residents, we value their opinions, and we incorporate those, and I think at the end of the day, those projects will, the outcomes will be the desired outcomes that our residents want.
Okay. Leah?
So, we have our town website, which is great, and it's even more great when folks actually go to our town website. But in a lot of cases, folks don't go to our website. So, recently, we did start a community newsletter, which I think has been well-received, and if you haven't signed up for it yet, I believe you can go onto the website. You can also go onto the website and sign up for notifications of any meeting. If you want to know when the Select Board meeting is, it'll send you a notification, all different kinds of meetings. So, I encourage anyone to do that tonight. That would be one, that would be a great opportunity to get that message out. I will say though, that for a few years now, I've been saying that we kind of have to put the information where people are getting it. And, you know, there is some discussion and some, you know, opposition to using different Facebook forums, but I still think that we should try to reach people where they are. I don't see why it's so bad to put under "Lakeville Helping Lakeville," you know, town meeting on this date with the link directly to the town's website. Because what does happen is that, you know, it does get a little convoluted when folks start, you know, rebutting and taking it on their own, but at least the link is there for folks to go to the town's website. And as always, we announce so many things at our Select Board meetings. Just put the Select Board link, and there you go. You'll get the information.
Okay. All right. Our next question, Chris, you're getting to start, okay? How do you think the town could attract businesses to invest in Lakeville?
I don't believe this, the, I think, I know there's been discussion in the past about a commercial tax rate, try to shift some of the tax burden from the residents to our commercial base. I'm not a supporter of that. I've seen the studies, I've seen the numbers. We're not there yet in terms of the required number of value that the commercial properties have in this town. We're not there yet. So, I think that would be counterintuitive. If anything, we need to ensure that we can have those agreements with the water authorities, Middleborough, Taunton, and so forth, to support any of that growth in those areas of town that have the water infrastructure. That's going to be key on attracting some of these commercial developers. You know, I'm in favor of those commercial developers that are without low impact, I think the term is, like retail and so forth, not looking for any large manufacturing facilities, but again, light impact, a low impact, I should say, commercial development to our community. And then maybe, I know maybe, there's some talk about forming an Economic Development Council, I believe, NDC, and I believe that is key, that's going to be critical, to get together the right people to kind of spearhead some ideas on how making the community more attractive, to get that commercial development. That is going to be key to ease the tax burden for the residents.
Okay. Leah?
Can you repeat the question?
How do you think the town could attract businesses to invest in Lakeville?
I think the first thing that we have to do, and like Chris said, the Select Board just approved a charge for the Economic Development Committee, and we haven't had one in a while. We did try to go with some of the obvious things, and that's not what the residents wanted. So, I think really what's going to be key is hearing from the residents on a regular basis and having folks participate, because the worst thing we can do is bring, try to bring things here that the folks don't want, because we see how strong the residents can be when, you know, they really aren't happy with the decision. So, I think the key really is listening to people, getting them to the table to tell us, "Let's look at the map." Where -- What, what is the zoning here? What can we put here? What would you like us to put there before we can start trying to attract folks here? Cause I don't want to go on the assumption that we want restaurants and then try to get some restaurants here and have the neighbors say, "We don't want a restaurant there." So I think we're at a crossroads right now where we really need to get folks involved, even if it's not on a committee, even if it's a, you know, forum, once every, you know, three months, to give us the information. Because if we thought a warehouse would be good, it would have been a million dollars in revenue. The residents didn't want it. So we can't begin to bring businesses here until we know what folks will accept in their backyard.
Okay. Paul?
I wish I knew what the answer was. I'd be a rich man. This is not, this is not a short-term plan. This is something that's gonna take a number of years. It took many years for Lakeville to change and get where it is. And it's gonna take a number of years to develop an economic plan and, and act on that particular plan. Do I think warehouses are the answer? No, I don't. I'm looking at the one in Bridgewater on Route 18 that's been empty since it's been built. I see warehouses empty in other communities. Restaurants are a tough business. You know, I, I don't know that that's gonna fix everything. I don't know that strip malls are gonna fix everything. Again, it's a long-term plan. We need to hear what the residents want. We need to hear what developers are willing to invest in. We need to talk to businesses and, and what is going up. And I think, I think the problem with this, with things today is that there's so few storefronts. You know, those numbers are dwindling. You know, everybody's buying things online. Everybody's shopping online, having things delivered. So I, I don't know that, that another plaza is gonna fix anything. I, I, I don't have an answer to that. I'm certainly open to the guidance from the community and the guidance from people that are willing to put their money on, on the table and willing to build something for this town to maybe attract some businesses. But again, it's a tough, it's a tough run. You know, society has changed very much, especially since COVID and post-COVID. And we don't have a, we don't have a downtown here in Lakeville. There's no foot traffic in, in certain places, so you, you have to watch that type of stuff. I, I don't know what the answer is. Thank you.
Next question starts with Leah. What do you see as the top three priorities for Lakeville over the next three years?
The top three priorities are what we were just talking about, economic development. However, equally as important is the housing situation. And let's not forget, even when houses are created, that still adds to some economic development because it does bring in taxation. And the third is we have to, and we've already started this, but it's still very important. In years past, there's always been not an adversarial relationship with the schools. And it wasn't one board of selectmen, one select board or another. But there's always been, you know, a give and take when it comes to the school budgets. I think that old method of dealing with the schools and their budgets has got to go. I think we all just need to sit down and say, "We want the best education system for our kids that our money can buy." I wish there was way more money so that we could give to the schools. Unfortunately, we have a budget that we all have to live, live by. But in the past, it's always been, "Well, we don't want to give you that." Well, you know, "You're hiding money." That's gotta go. That's gotta go. We need to have, and we, we've started it. We've started it. And I hope it continues where we're having open conversations. And actually, a lot of that's due to, to Chris's work with the school committee.
Okay. Paul? Your turn.
I will echo the, economic development is gonna be a priority. I think long-term, we need to think where money is gonna be spent. We need to go over contracts with unions and so forth and be able to project how that money's gonna be spent and what's that gonna cost over time. We have the depreciation of items in the community, you know, whether it's, whether it's police cruisers, whether it's fire trucks, whether it's the schools, you know, facilities deteriorating. We have to address that. Budget-wise, we're gonna be, we're gonna come into some difficult times. You know, we have a, the Commonwealth and the federal government are not in agreement on a number of things currently. It's gonna restrict the amount of money coming into Massachusetts in different areas, and we have to be very careful with that. I'm, I'm a very frugal person and I, I was fortunate to have gone to work for a higher education institution in Boston that was run by a man who was a CPA. And his, his zero-based budgeting, I know that departments cringe when they hear that type of stuff, worked very well. You had to explain why you wanted things, how that was gonna benefit the institution or benefit the community overall. And then you allotted that money. You weren't just given X number of dollars to spend on what you want to spend it on. And I think we're gonna have to tighten our belts in the coming years and be very cautious on how much money is spent and where it goes, and we're gonna have to make it last.
Chris?
All right. So I'm gonna echo what Bear and Paul said. It's all, at the end of the day, it comes down to finances. So being on the finance committee for the past three years, I have an intimate knowledge of our town budget, financial challenges. Also have dedicated a good amount of that time to analyzing the regional school district budget. I'm fully aware of their financial challenges that they're facing. And with all that, I mean, you could break it down, I guess, to three subcategories on the financial, you know, we have a budget challenges, we have expenses that are increasing faster than our two and a half percent and new growth levy base allows us to budget for. Land use, so again, that comes back down to, you know, balancing that commercial development with the high-density housing. High-density housing is going to bring its own financial challenges. For the most part, high-density housing, the impact on services tend to exceed the levy that they tend to bring in. And of course, the, the economic development, you know, how, how can we put all that together and solve those, solve those issues? Regarding the, the school budget, the school budget, I'm not sure how many folks are aware that 50% of the town budget is dedicated to the school budget. And, and right now, pretty much most of our new two and a half percent levy every year, all of it goes towards the new, goes to the school budget. So that doesn't leave a whole lot to address our fiscal challenges in the town.
Okay. And the next question starts with Chris again. Many town committees and boards are seeking volunteers. What strategies would you implement to encourage civic engagement?
Well, I am aware that it's always a challenge to get folks to volunteer for the many boards and committees that we have around town. I see the vacancies all the time posted. So it's always a challenge to get folks to get engaged and to be interested. And we face, we face those challenges, I mean, being a member of the Lakeville Alliance Club, always trying to get members to join. You know, we're very, us as members, we're very passionate, whether I'm a member of the Lakeville Alliance Club or on the finance committee or on the select board, the agricultural commission, you know, we're passionate about doing it. We just need to get more people involved and passionate and dedicated to their community. So I think this goes along with ensuring that, A, us as volunteers, we continually go out and we advocate the benefits of volunteering for your town, making sure that we're doing advertising the benefits either through the social media channels and so forth, the websites and so forth, articles in the Masket. Now, that's always a great resource as well. So I, I think it just comes through general education. If we can get the word out there and us being advocates for our own, I think that'll go a long way to get people more motivated and hopefully solve the issue of getting people to volunteer, be on the boards and committees around town.
Leah?
In a similar way, I'm, I don't want to use the word recruiting, but no matter where I go, folks will say, "Oh, so what is it that you really do?" And, you know, I, I offer some, you know, some information, but what I always say to everyone is, "The one thing that you can do once or twice a year that matters so much is going to town meeting." Your vote counts at town meeting. It's not like the Electoral College. You can make a difference in, in a vote, in, in, in any, on any of those articles. And I always say to people too, "Careful, you might enjoy it." And I've had folks come back and say to me, "I've been watching all the select board meetings. You know, when I have a little bit more time, I'd like to volunteer for something." It really is rewarding in a way to participate in your community. And even if that means just going to town meeting, you have participated so much by just going to town meeting. But I think we have to just keep at it. We keep at it in asking in the newsletters. We keep at it at the select board meetings by saying, "These positions are, are, are open." But I wouldn't, I wouldn't dissuade anyone, even if you only have a few hours to give. Find something that all you have to do, the senior center's always looking for folks to do Meals on Wheels, to, you know, do, if you only have one day a month, sign up. Sign up to take someone to a doctor's appointment. One day a month is not too little.
Okay. Paul?
I think it's peer pressure. Really, I'm, I'm here tonight because of peer pressure. I ran for selectman in 2015 as a write-in campaign because I was annoyed. And I made up a sign and showed up at the day of the polls, much to the dismay of Lily and Drain, and threw my name into the ring and, you know, swatted the hornet's nest a little bit, as I have a tendency to like to do. And, and from that day forward, every year, somebody has said to me, "You should run for selectman. You should run for selectman. You should run for selectman." And I finally got worn down this year. I have the time, I have enough cognitive ability left that I think I can, can help instead of hurting. And so I did it. And I, I watch people on social media. If they spend as much time actually doing something as they do swatting other people on social media, they could actually make a difference. One of my friends, Alan Frawley, from Middleborough is constantly on social media, you know. Instead of being here, why don't you run for a seat? Why don't you take an open position on a committee? Why don't you do this? Why don't you do that? I don't know that he gets much activity out of it, but he sure tries hard. I think that people need to find somebody that they think can make a difference and encourage them to do it. That was how the Agricultural Commission started. There were, there was a group of us that were agricultural and open-space minded, and that's, that's how that came to fruition. And I think we did a pretty good job while we were active, but then COVID threw a wrench in that works. But it, it's gonna be peer pressure and it's gonna be trying to single out people that you think can do something and, and encouraging them to do it.
Okay. Paul, you get the next question to start with. With the town facing dense development in the form of 40B housing projects, do you think the town will be able to provide the additional services in classrooms necessary to accommodate this new growth?
In short, no. We're, we're gonna outgrow these facilities. You know, it's not, it's not far off. I mean, I went to every one of those schools, including the North Lakeville School that is now a, a home. But, you know, we had a better classroom ratio, I think, during those days. We had fewer people in town. Those days are gone. I, I think that there's, there's gonna be a large draw on the budget in years moving forward as the schools need to be expanded or rebuilt or, or a new school facility built. It's, it's gonna happen. And the more people that want to come to beautiful little Lakeville, the more strain on those services will, will take. I, I don't think, we might be right on the cusp right now that the infrastructure can handle it. But as far as the school system goes in the next few years, I think, I think it's gonna be a serious issue that we're gonna have to address, and it's gonna cost us a lot of money to address it.
Chris?
Repeat the question.
With the town facing dense development in the form of 40B housing projects, do you think the town will be able to provide the additional services in classrooms necessary to accommodate this new growth?
Okay, so specific just to schools then?
Yeah.
That's a question, okay. So as I previously said, I'm opposed to this 40B housing. I'm not, I'm not opposed to affordable housing, but I am opposed to 40B housing. In my opinion, it's a, it's a, it's a unfunded state mandate. State mandates it, yet they don't provide any resources. That being said, we have to learn how to handle those 40B housing developments. And we know we have one and potentially two, we have several already. We have one, potentially two larger projects coming down the road. We know that. As far as the, the impacts to the school, again, can't really answer that without knowing really how many students that's gonna add. I, I'm aware that the student population has been steadily declining since 2010. There is some capacity now, I don't have the exact numbers, that's a question for the school district. However, the more of these projects that are approved and built, there will come a time where we will run out of room. It's just, it's just, you can't escape that. And at that time, then we'll be looking at, obviously, debt exclusion to build another school. When that'll occur, nobody, nobody can say, but that's definitely a potential coming down the road.
Okay. Leah?
Can you read it one more time, Joanne?
Sure. With the town facing dense development in the form of 40B housing projects, do you think the town will be able to provide the additional services in classrooms necessary to accommodate this new growth?
So services and classrooms?
Services in classrooms.
In classrooms.
Yeah.
Okay. So the region, so the school, the school district, they did do a sort of feasibility study. And exactly what Chris said, there is some declining enrollment. Out of all the schools, they say that Assawampset is the only one that has some overcrowding right now. But they say at this point that we don't necessarily need to build any new schools, partly because of the declining enrollment, but there is some major maintenance work that needs to be done in order to keep these schools at, you know, the level they, they are. So that's all money. That's expensive. As everyone knows, we just did a $2 million doors and windows project at Assawampset. I mean, it's mind-boggling, $2 million just to replace doors and windows. But that will, you know, extend the life of that school a little bit. I think we need to take advantage of this time to study some of this, the, with a little bit of the declining enrollment and start, we really need to start putting some plans in place. And again, that is collaboration with everyone. It's collaboration with Freetown, who we share a school district with. It's collaboration with anyone who does any planning and our, the building commissioner to take a look at these buildings to be sure that, and right now, we have a little reprieve with the declining enrollment to make sure that we can do some of this work so that how we get there, we're gonna have to find the answer to that.
Okay. Next question, Leah, you get to start.
Okay.
The redevelopment of the old Lakeville Hospital site has long, has been a longstanding issue. What is your position on Rhino's current proposal that Lakeville apply for reme, remediation grant?
So as a current select board member, I have zero interest in taking any ownership. of the property in order to get that, that grant. Back when all the warehouse, the original warehouse plans were going on, I did so much study of that Brownfield money. And the reason why I never tried to pursue us purchasing the land and using Brownfield money to clean it up was because you weren't even guaranteed anything more than a half a million dollars. And that's like a $10 million cleanup site. I didn't want us to have the responsibility, not having the funds to clean it then. And I certainly don't want us to be obligated to do that now. I don't, it scares me to think that we could own a little bit of that just to apply for the money. And there's no guarantees in life. Rhino is saying that they would purchase it back from us or make the easement go away. I just don't want to take that risk.
Paul?
Again, I, I remember that as a vibrant place and it closing in 1992 and nothing happening. Good sense. I, I would not object to some type of partnership as long as we could have some type of rock solid indemnification and penalties in line that if they did not fulfill what they were doing, the, the town would be made whole. Something needs to occur on that property. I mean, it's, it's a terrible eyesore as it is. We've spun our wheels for so many years trying to get things done. I, I would not like to see the town lose any grants if we assisted Rhino with a grant. We would have to have some type of projection on that, that it would not eliminate our future ability to get a grant if we get wrapped up in that. But I think something has to happen. Something has to break. And I'm, I'm not a huge risk taker, but I think some risk has, has to be taken in this case to get something done there. And again, we, we pay lawyers to write things up for us all the time. If we can write it up to weigh strongly in our favor, if they have a breach of contract, then, then we do that.
Chris?
So regarding the hospital project, I'm aware of the, the current issues around the Brownfield grant that Rhino has requested. I agree 100% with, with Leah. That stipulation of that is that we would have to take ownership of the land. So I, again, I agree with Leah 100%. I don't support that in any way, absolutely not. She would not take on any liability with that decision. I mean, I, I, I support doing all that we can to help Rhino achieve success with this project. As Paul noted, it's been a nice opportunity. We all know that. We drive by it all the time. But again, with that, I support a cautious approach to whatever Rhino is requesting. I don't, I want to ensure that we don't incur any liability from that. And most importantly, I want to make sure that all their obligations are satisfied as outlined in the development permit.
Okay. Leah, you get the next question again. Okay? Lakeville, like other towns served by the MBTA, is required to comply with the new state mandated zoning changes to allow more multifamily housing. How do you propose the town navigate these requirements while addressing community concerns?
So I believe now that the train station is in Middleborough, we're considered an adjacent community. So we don't have the same requirements as we would have if the train station was still in Lakeville. And I do believe right now we are in compliance with the MBTA communities.
Okay. Paul?
I have the same opinion. I think we are in compliance. I think we are an adjacent community. And I, I don't think that that's the, that's one of the top things on our plate at this current time.
Okay. Chris?
So I, I'll reiterate, reiterate again, the MBTA Community Act is similar to, to 40B. It's an unfunded mandate from the state. It's the bottom line. It's true, we are now an adjacent community, so our housing, affordable housing, housing requirements have been reduced. At the same time, it's not to say that the state couldn't change that in the future. So again, I, I actively oppose that. I oppose the state coming in and overriding our local zoning. And I, my work is within the scope of my responsibilities to ensure that, you know, we do all that we can to kind of help maintain our local zoning versus the state coming in dictating that. That being said, I think everybody's aware that several communities have filed this better lawsuit. One lawsuit already, the city of, town of Milton. There's several other lawsuits. Middleborough has one.
Middleborough's one, yeah.
Correct, has filed a lawsuit. So I think we may, maybe we'll see some relief coming out of those lawsuits. I'm hoping so. Again, I actively monitor that and hopefully we can see some, maybe some additional resources from the state. If they're going to oppose these mandates on the communities, I'd like to see some additional resources coming from the state.
Okay. Paul? The proposed renovations to Old Colony Regional Votech High School come with significant costs. Do you support the project? And if so, how would you ensure that Lakeville taxpayers get the best value?
I have not followed that project to the degree that I should have. I know that the community benefits from our relationship with Old Colony, but I'm not in a position to speak on that right now.
Okay. Chris?
Okay, so I'll stop by saying, everybody should know that I am a member of the Old Colony School Building Committee. So I have a pretty good knowledge of, of what's going on with that project. In addition to that, my daughter was also attended Old Colony. So that being said, that project, we will be voting on it town meeting during the fall. We don't have final numbers yet. We'll have those later on this summer. Regarding best value for our community, so I'm obviously a big advocate for the vocational schools. My daughter went to the school. I'm very familiar with what it offers, a fantastic education, trades and so forth. I've seen the studies. We are lacking on the number of students going into the trade industry. There's a high demand for those skilled workers. The job opportunities are phenomenal. At the same time, I'm aware of the demand, the number of students who want to attend the vocational schools. Right now, it's roughly about a 50% acceptance rate, so the demand far exceeds the capacity. So, you know, I, I, I'm excited that the new school is going to bring some, three additional trades, plumbing, HVAC and dental. It's going to address issues with a building that's got significant infrastructure issues, capacity issues, ADA compliance issues and so forth, aging technology and so forth. So I think this is a great opportunity for the community. That's going to be provided for our students and the students that are interested in going to the trades.
Okay. Leah?
So I've already gone, part of our job as the select board is reaching out to our partners too at the state. And everyone that's on the select board in Lakeville knows, you know, our representative, Norm Morrell and Mike Rodricks. And, you know, I've already had some conversations with them where I've said, like, okay, so if the state knows the shortage of tradespeople, how come you can't give us a little more money? Versus just, you know, like the, the windows and doors project at Assawampset. It was a $4,000 project. They gave us $2,000. That's typically what that, that makeup is, that break. We, the community has to pay the 50%. In the case of Old Colony, it's the six communities that send kids there. But knowing that, you know, they graduate, what, 10, 12 carpenters every year? I mean, I'm so happy that we're getting more shops because I feel like we need them. But it's so much money. This is going to, single-handedly, be one of the biggest expenses that the town of Lakeville will have to incur. And we need the education for the kids. My family, my husband, my two brother-in-laws, they both, all three of them went to Blue Hills. They're all very successful folks that all started with, you know, a Votech education. I, I think we have to support that, but man, the money is just so much. I wish the state could give us more. So I make sure, even some of, some other folks that I know who are senators for other areas, I talk their ear off saying, something's got to give. I know, I, I know that there's a limit, but we need a little bit more than the, than the 49% or whatever that is, Mr. Marshall, 49, 50%.
Joanne, can I just address something about?
Sure.
So we got to Leah's concern about state aid and helping us ease the burden of the cost of sending students. I am aware that there is at least one, maybe several bills going on the legislature right now that is being spearheaded by the superintendents to help to allocate additional funds for those communities to help offset the cost to send those students to the vocational technicals. So hopefully we'll see something in the new legislation.
And for anyone who doesn't know, there are five communities that attend, correct?
Five or six.
Five.
Five.
Five, yeah.
Yeah. Talking helps, right?
Yeah.
Got to keep talking.
Chris, you got the last question to start. Okay? What would you like to see the CPA funds used for?
Well, my personal opinion, CPA funds, I think are a great way to improve some of infrastructure projects. The Old Town Hall, I'm aware of the CPA funds have been used for the Old Town Hall. I think anything that's going to benefit the residents as a whole. So community centers, the Old Town Hall, that's, that's a great use of CPA funds, CPC funds?
Well, CPA, like through the CPEC.
Yeah, CPA funds. Maybe improvements to some of the playing fields and so forth around town communities. Maybe I'd like to see it for a new, me being a veteran, and I know Selectman Carboni is also a veterans park. Some ideas, some early ideas. So I mean, I think that would be a good use of some of those funds. Again, funds that are going to benefit the community as a whole.
Okay. Leah?
I think sometimes the best ideas come from the folks sitting at home. I know a few folks have come forward to present their ideas to the CPC. I have to say that I have a lot of confidence on the folk, with the folks on the CPC. So I feel like they will listen to every idea and, and give it its, its consideration. But I would like to see also, I know there is a potential veterans' growing vegetables project, which I would love to see. I don't know if that's the way it's written up, if it'll qualify, but, yeah. And it, and it's still early, so it's not like there's this massive pool of money yet. It's not like it's, you know, holding on to.
It's only been a year or so.
It's only been a couple of years. Yeah, so, yeah.
Okay. Paul?
I think the expenditures involved with the CPC would be a good question to be put in the newsletter that goes out as people start to read and engage that. What would the public in general like to see? I have heard talk of the veterans' gardens, of, of course, always a good idea. If you can get that space used and continually used. Again, I worked in the city of Boston for six years and, and saw community gardens flourish out of the gate and then get run down and dilapidated over time. So there's always that concern. Certainly, the money spent on the Old Talk, Old Town Hall has been well spent. Anything that would benefit our veteran community in general, I think is always money well spent. But a little bit of a, a little bit of guidance from the public or a little bit more guidance from the public in some form of a poll would not be a bad plan moving forward.
Thank you. The questions are over from?
Okay, so we do have time. If you have a question that has not been answered and will apply to all three candidates, you're welcome. Does anyone have a question? You can raise your hand and you can come up here. Okay, so you raise your hand first and then you can come second. Come right up here, state your name and your question.
Hi, Noel Rowell. It's been great listening to you all, learned a lot. I have heard the opinion that Lakeville should continue with a private well system in part because the public water supply would only invite more development and also because it would require getting water from two different sources, Taunton and New Bedford, if I understand it right, to supply the two ends of town. Is it realistic to think the town can continue on private wells, given that we're getting development anyway? The state has been experiencing drought in the last few years and the contaminants present in the wells include arsenic, lead, cadmium, now PFAS. I realize this is a several-year endeavor that would probably require federal funding, maybe state funding. I don't know, which may be difficult to secure. But isn't it inevitable that Lakeville will require public water supply sooner rather than later? As a footnote, I can hear people already thinking about property tax increases. I can hear it. But let's face it, if, if you don't have water, you don't have, you know, the things that sustain life. Thank you.
Okay, so Paul, you want to answer first?
Well, water is always going to be a concern in Lakeville in general. I mean, we are the public water supply or the, or the area that supplies water for, I think, 150,000 people between New Bedford and Taunton. There are, there are always going to be hiccups in public water supplies. You're seeing that right now with LaBarren Hills as, as they are going to have to have some type of water management board in there. And you're going to see the fees probably go up for the people in LaBarren. You know, Clark Shores has their public water supply. And, and that's going to have some, some issues as well, from what I hear. Water is always a huge concern. And, and we control the environment that the water supply for these area communities is, is affected. So, you know, it goes into open space. It goes into conservation. It goes into everything. As far as establishing public water for the town of Lakeville, I, I, I understand that that's going to be a situation that we're going to need something. But private wells have, have gone this far and, you know, there are water treatments that are available, although those are cost prohibitive now as well. It's a, it's a long-term concern, especially as you look at the area communities that are having problems with PFAS and things like that. I don't, I don't know what the answer is on long-term.
Chris?
I, I don't believe we're at a point yet to start considering adding water, town water, especially to the areas of town, especially the southern end of town that don't have it. The cost, I think, would just, would just be astronomical. And not knowing what type of grants or federal or state assistance would be available. It's, you know, really not, it's an easy question to answer, really not, we're ready to start discussing that now. I, I would be, I would be in favor of expanding, obviously, the northern end of town in connection, you know, the service agreement with Middleborough, if that was possible. I certainly would support that. Regarding private wells, I have a private well. I'm, I'm aware of the expenses that go along with the responsibilities. And I'm also aware that there is a state, being discussed in the state legislator, legislation that requiring some sort of a bill that would require private wells to be tested on a regular basis. I was actually part of a study where they came out and they did free testing for me and answered, answered some survey questions. So I know that there, there is a push to have more regulation on private wells to ensure, again, that those, well, you, you may upon when you sell your house, sell your property, kind of like a Title V inspection, something like that, you would have to have your well pass an inspection too. So I would, obviously, I would be in support of that, more regulation for the private wells. But I don't believe we're yet at a point where we need to seriously consider adding water to the areas of town that don't currently have it.
Leah?
So I feel that we were So I feel that we were ill-equipped when we found out we were getting the ARPA money. So we were getting, you know, millions of dollars and we never really had a water infrastructure plan. And as a matter of fact, the, some of the maps we've seen of where our actual water lines are, are, are just not hand-drawn, but they may as well be, um, from the actual water supplier from Taunton, but they've, they've shared that with us. So the first thing we would have to do, and again, I don't know if there's grant money, um, or what, but we would just have to figure out what we have and where it is to begin with. Um, is more water infrastructure gonna bring more housing? Probably, but housing's gonna come, whether they have to dig the wells or they can connect. It'll happen quicker if they can connect to the street, but, um, it might be a little more cost prohibitive for them if they have to have a whole well and a treatment facility and everything else. But, um, I will take the opportunity, though, while we're talking about wells, it's, um, so I'm thankful that my husband always knew enough to test our well and he's always tested it, he's tested it, he's changed the filtration, he does all that stuff. But there's lots of folks in town who think it's, oh, it's well water, it's gotta be good. Please get your wells tested. I'm not being an alarmist by any means, you might find out that, you know, it's a little different than what your neighbor has or, you know, but just, and, and get, get in touch with a good well company so that you can just keep an eye on it. You may have too many minerals, you may have, it doesn't mean it's bad, just get your wells tested.
Janet Pronka, the question I have, well, first of all, I wanna thank you all for taking the time, taking on such a big responsibility, renewing and the two of you adding, you know, jumping right into something new. Um, I, I love the fact that you all are concerned what the resident wants. My question for you, Leah, and the other two, is, um, you mentioned about, you want the input from the people and you mentioned social media. How, how can we, um, what media could we use to send out like a survey to every resident in the town, um, optional name or no name, but they can, you know, whatever the question, I, I can't remember exactly what the question, what do they want, what did the people wanna see come in with that? You mentioned, what do they wanna see in the town?
Um, so unfortunately, with the cost of postage, I think to do a town-wide mailing, to send.
Well, online now, would it be like media, like Facebook or on WhatsApp?
Oh, I thought you meant how we could reach everybody.
No, no.
Okay. Well, mailing like that is about six thousand dollars. Uh, maybe in a good year, I'd be willing to do it, but, um, yeah. But I, I feel like you're never gonna get everyone, Janet. Um, some folks don't weigh into Lakeville helping Lakeville anymore. So I think the message has to be, um, anyone who's interested, try to get a friend interested and have them come forward, check the town's website. We could do a survey on the town's website, but it doesn't mean everyone's gonna see, see it.
So we could do a town survey that's on the website?
Yeah.
Send out the questions and have people send it back?
Yeah.
That would be, okay.
Okay, Mr. Pronka.
Yeah, I, I, I would support that. Uh, anything, obviously, that we can, any tool that we can leverage that'll solicit feedback from the community while minimizing the cost to do that, to be as pointed, we don't do a mailing and incur that expense. Uh, but you could certainly do an online survey that's relatively cheap, um, certainly something that could be, um, explored as a way to get community engagement for. Uh, and in addition to just holding those public forums and trying to get the community to get its, you know, I know people are interested, we, we always see the same number of people at town meetings and meetings like this, right? Uh, that's just the reality of it. So the challenge is, the same challenge, getting people more interested and being in the boards and committees, is to get them more particip- more, more members of residents to participate, attend those town meetings, attend those public, public forums, committee hearings and so forth. Uh, and then, yeah, cer- certainly an online survey is relatively cheap, something that can be done.
Paul?
Yeah, you'd have to do an online survey to echo my, my partners up here on the, on the table, um, but you'd have to do some type of reward at the end of it, you have to give a prize away. Um, social, social media is a necessary evil. It's, you know, it's so good and it's so bad all rolled into one, it's gonna be the end of our society. Um, but I'm a small business owner and I use social media on a regular basis. Um, but as far as doing a survey, in order to get the engagement, in order to get people involved, you're gonna have to give away a free dump sticker or you're gonna have to, you get something like that. And I'm a dump guy, right? I don't get, I don't get trash pickup, I'm old-school Lakeville, I go to the dump and I love it. Um, but you're, you're gonna have to do something like that in order to get that engagement. They have to be able to win something. Um, if you ask, if we asked everybody in this room to do the survey, you all would because you're all already engaged in it, you're already here putting your time in. Um, but I know if I, if I was gonna give Mr. Marshall an extra, an extra bag of, of, you know, town trash bags, he gets an extra sleeve, he's gonna extra member, make sure that he gets that in first.
That's a great idea.
You know, so there's gotta be some reward at the end.
Thank you. Were there any other questions on the floor? Oh, great. Okay, well, thank you. Oh, I'm sorry.
Can I have a question, can I have follow-up questions from all of you?
You can ask.
I came in with a question that wasn't asked, I just wanna ask some follow-up questions.
You may ask a question that applies to all three candidates only. If it's a specific candidate that's not in the spirit of the forum?
Okay.
Do you have a general question?
Yes, I do.
Okay, then you can come up and ask your general question.
I was gonna make it specific, but I'd be glad to make it general.
Don't, don't make it specific to any particular candidate.
Someone who's left out.
Everybody.
Yes.
Okay. It was stated by at least one or maybe more of the candidates that they'd like to make Lake for, Lakeville more affordable. So my question is, how specifically would you make Lakeville more affordable? What do you have for ideas?
Uh, why don't we have Chris start?
So making a community affordable all comes down to, uh, A, either increasing our revenue or B, decreasing our costs, or ideally both. Uh, so our revenue sources, you know, primarily come from our tax levy. Uh, we all know that our taxes go up on average, uh, well, they go up no more than two and a half percent, however, this is also based off of property values and so forth. Uh, and then our second largest revenue source is state aid. Uh, and in these challenging economic times, we don't, we, if we follow, if you're following what's going on at the state level, we know that the state budget is going through some adjustments as we speak. Uh, so we can't rely on state aid as being the savior for increasing our revenue sources, unfortunately. So you go back to your tax levy. We all know that, you know, I'm familiar with the issues, uh, the property values around Long Pond, um, and the tax rates that are constantly going up, a lot primarily due to uh, increasing property values. Uh, so what can we do? Um, our town budget, I have been, I've been reviewing our town budget for three years on the finance committee, so I know exactly what's in it. And our town administrators and select board and finance committees do a great job, kind of every year, trying to come up with a sustainable budget, but there isn't a lot, a whole lot of fat to trim from that budget. There's little areas we can cut here and there, but it's just not a whole lot. We have a lot of fixed costs, we have retirement, we have debt, we have utilities and so forth that we just can't cut. We have union negotiated raises and so, so forth. So we need to look at those and find those little areas we could cut, maybe work closer with our legislative, legislative delegates to try to find some new revenue sources, capitalize on grants and so forth. Again, maximize our revenue, try to cut costs and also focus on the school budget, which I've been doing for the past three years too.
Leah?
Um, so, there's not an easy answer, John, I think you know that. Um, like Chris said, there isn't a, there, I, I mean, our departments at the town hall are not three and four and five, the only department that I can think of offhand that has three people is the treasurer's office. Um, otherwise, our departments are a department head and one person, so there really isn't a whole lot that we can cut out of our budget. Um, interestingly enough, the one place where we do generate revenue, um, and I can't believe I'm gonna say this, but, um, our ambulance service brings in over a million dollars in revenue and a lot of us are in the background trying to fund four more firefighters because the more of them we have, the more, um, calls we can take, the more mutual aid calls we can take and we can make a little bit more money that way. That's one of the only revenue generating, um, things we have. But we never want our own care in our community to suffer. So that's why the chief is, you know, um, we've reduced some of the mutual aid to Middleborough, which means we lost some revenue. But until we have the right amount of people fully funded, um, you know, the chief has to just maintain, um, control over what the services are that we give to the fine folks of Lakeville who deserve the, we have fabulous EMTs, they're not just, um, medics, they're, I don't even know the terminology, they're actually fully fledged EMTs. So that is a place, um, where we could try to, and there is a few things happening on the county level that I know that other people probably don't, so it may not be fair for me to say, um, but, you know, um, the county's trying to take care of everybody too, so.
Paul?
So Lakeville's not gonna get more affordable unless you make more money and, and have more money in your household. Lake, Lakeville is not gonna get cheaper to live in. Um, the only thing that we could hope for is that we slow, um, slow the costs going up, offset it a little bit with, uh, a tax base with economic development. I would say that you, our, our long-term hopes would be to keep Lakeville, uh, a value. Uh, there's a resource there. We've got a great police department, we've got a great fire department, we've got a great highway department, uh, we have open space. Um, but I, I don't see, I don't see the budget ever going down or the numbers going down and making it more affordable. I think we could, we could hope we slow some things down, but I don't think you're ever gonna see a drop in things. And I, I respectfully disagree a little bit that the, that the ambulance service should be, um, used as a business. I think that, I think that it's great that they bring in money, uh, but, but adding more people and adding more ambulances for income, um, i- is just not something that sits well with me. We have a great fire department and, you know, I, I've used their resources recently with my mom and, uh, I have nothing but great things to say about them, but as far as it being a money-making business, it's, it's not gonna work out long-term, in my opinion.
Thank you. Do you have one more question?
One more?
General?
General question, yes.
Okay.
Whoever's the general, I'd like to speak to the general right now. There was conversation about, near the end of the, the, this, this event, about communicating with the townsfolk and it started with a six thousand dollar mailer, which is old-school, which went into social media and, and whatnot. Doesn't, doesn't the town have a town newsletter now?
Yes. Yep.
And doesn't that go out to everybody or?
Um, I believe you have to sign up for it. And I think you came in after I mentioned something about, please sign up for it.
Yeah, okay.
The more people we can get to get that newsletter, but also, um, folks should submit information to it too.
Okay, I ju- I would just make the comment that one of the select persons that are leaving, Brenna, is actually employed by me and this week she sent out the newsletter to over four thousand of our customers and we get great response, great open rates, and we offer no dump stickers, but that's a good idea, actually. So it is possible.
Yeah. You want me to, I see if anybody else has?
So they have three minutes.
You're right.
Do you wanna say anything?
Does anybody else wanna say something? Paul? No, no. Answering the, any other, no, we're all set? Okay.
Yeah, three minutes, eh?
All right.
Paul, would you like to begin?
I'd just like to thank everybody for coming tonight and engaging. Um, I, after hearing the other people that I'm up here with, you, you folks can't lose. I mean, whoever you elect is gonna, is engaged with the town, wants to serve the town, is gonna do the best they can to help the town. Um, it's just gonna come down to, you're alphabetical, uh, we go, I always like to go by height and weight, but, um, you know, that, that, you know, that can't win. Uh, everything, you know.
Uh, excuse me, you have to stand up, everybody has to stand in order to get that joke.
I am standing. You know, I, I, I would like the opportunity to try and serve the town and do what I can to give my perspective on things, but I really don't think you're gonna lose however this election turns out. Thank you.
Chris?
Great. Thank you, Paul. And I agree with, with Paul's sentiment, I think we're all great candidates up here. Um, I wanna thank everybody for, uh, coming tonight, watching at home and Joanne and Katie for hosting us and giving us the opportunity for the residents to see what we offer. Um, I hope everybody will consider my experience on the finance committee for the past three years, the work that I've done, um, and, um, and take into account my dedication for this community, all, all that I enjoy serving this community, the things that I do for this community. Um, and I look forward to, you know, if, if you, if I have your vote and if you elect me, then I look forward to serving you as your next select person. Thank you.
Thank you.
Leah?
Um, all the same, you know, thanks and accolades to the two of you. I know how much time you put into this, not just this, I mean, you do the other candidates too. So, um, Joanne, you do so much for the community, you organize the festival, all the concerts, Katie is our moderator, I mean, you put in so much time. Um, I will say that, you know, Paul mentioned earlier peer pressure, well, I was one of the ones that asked him many times to run and he chose to run against me, so thanks. But it doesn't, it, it doesn't matter because, um, it, it doesn't matter because, um, I, I know everyone at this table is gonna give it their all. Um, I've learned a lot from Paul about agriculture, learned a lot from Chris, I mean, any, you know, I wish there were three seats, I really do. Um, but, um, yeah, but just thank you to everybody that's put this together and, um, I just wanna be able to do the work on the economic development part, which should've been, um, that was one of the goals for my first term, but we got a little sidetracked by that thing called COVID, so, um, and then just so much other things happened. And I actually have the time to put into, you know, um, doing a lot of work for that and seeing what we can come up with, but it's definitely gonna be a collaborative effort.
Thank you. Okay, so thank you, everyone. Um, and I'd like to note that this forum, um, interviews for the candidates for other offices and voting-related material is available on Lake Cam and I would like to acknowledge that Lake Cam is bringing this live stream and recording. It's a wonderful resource we have in our community and I'm personally very grateful for their, uh, participation tonight and getting this out to the public. So thank you. And please remember to vote on April seventh, um, from noon to eight PM at Ted Williams Camp, Loom Pond Lodge, twenty-eight Precinct Street. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.